Four o'clock, and we are going to open the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board, opening exercises by the none other than the famous Thomas Kennedy, father of fabulous swimmers.
Oh, well.
Many of them.
Thank you, but as wonderful as my children's swimming is, they didn't, they will tell you, they couldn't have imagined a week like this. So, yes, I know, I appreciate you indulging me, as the last two weeks have been the fastest swimming in the history of Citrus County swimming. At the, yes. History making was at the FHSAA 2A and 3A state championship swims at the Fast Aquatic Center in Ocala, which for those of us who have had to make the long drive to South Florida, we really envy, and you guys have it easy, you just go up to Ocala. So, I would like if you would, if all of the swimmers from both high schools of La Canto and Crystal River, if you would come forward and just kind of line this area right in here. And coaches, please come with them, because you're gonna have to fill in, and coaches and principals too, if you would all come up, because it's important what we're gonna share here. And there's people who are watching and will want to see your faces as we talk about, and yes, you'll hearing clanking of medals, that those, they do not just hand those to you, they are pretty remarkable.
You need to be in the back.
So, a couple of things I want to share about these, and there's a lot here, so I'm gonna ask maybe with, particularly Coach Ambrose, who will be able to share and correct me on any of this. So, we had over fifteen swimmers compete, seventeen swimmers that were a part of the team that competed on, from both, combined both. No less than five new all-county records were broken at the last two weeks. And when we're talking all-county records, we're talking some that dated back decades. Then you have some that were broken in the meet multiple times. So, there's some fast swimming, Noah. And we're gonna get to Noah here in a second. We had no less than eight school records that were broken, four individual medalists and one of our medalist relay teams. Noah, Noah can you wave so everyone can see, he's got the most, you know, hardware there. Noah is the fastest swimmer in Citrus County history. Now, that would be impressive enough, but Noah is also one of the first, if not we believe the first, all-American swim athlete in Citrus County history. And Noah's gonna correct me here, he is also ranked, not just first in Citrus County, not just first in Florida, not just first in FHSAA swimming, he is first in the nation in the swimming as a fifteen-year-old?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, in what stroke?
In the backstroke.
Again, in the entire country. As a sophomore, to give you, you're sophomore this year, right? Just, I know that sounds crazy, but he's still now ranked in the top twenty-five recruiting swimmers in all of the United States. So, it's a pretty impressive there. But we don't stop with Noah. By the way, you know with his name, what is the most feared thing that water has is, was Noah. So, we have two pirate ladies that were just amazing, and one of them cannot be here tonight, Morgan. Morgan was a double medalist at the 2A champs. She actually is having a college signing ceremony at this very time. So, Morgan's doing that. So, Morgan and Leah, Leah, we're gonna wave so that we can see. Both Morgan and Leah have just committed to swim Division II college swimming, they're gonna continue, as seniors, they are gonna continue their swimming. You're swimming where? Who are you gonna swim for?
Shippensburg University in Pennsylvania.
Out-of-state girl, she's gonna leave us. She knows I'm gonna cry too about it. Morgan's gonna be swimming at West Florida, and so she's gonna be competing there. Hopefully, they're gonna see each other at the national championship. A relay team, relay team, all-county records, multiple records I believe with you, correct? On it, the, okay, those of us who are parents and coaches of swimming, what we say is, they're not just the best good-looking swimmers and of athletes, they are also the smartest. So, this relay team has a unweighted GPA, wait, guys, wave your hand, the relay team there, so that all, everybody can see, unweighted of 3.75 and a weighted of 4.45 of GPA. They're not just fast, they're wicked smart. So, I know a lot of you, Ms. Counts and I talk about swimming and why it is the greatest sport of all times, and Coach Wells will, I think, attest to that, having been a Division I swimmer himself. These are amazing kids. And I really care about each and every one of you, and I know the sport doesn't always get what other sports do, and you guys make a difference. So, with that, since you all are the past, as I told you, we're gonna bring up the future, and that is, I'm gonna bring up Evie, so, Evie, if you'll come up here. And, come up here. So, we had the La Canto Primary Veterans' performance a couple, about a week ago, was it, now? I'm looking, where is, where are you? There you are, I'm sorry, Mom.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And, of course, this beautiful, you know, little voice filled the Curtis Peterson auditorium, and so I asked, because Ashley, whoops, I'm sorry. I asked for Ashley Quinn to be able to, and to be here, because the, making such a difference with the music program at La Canto Primary. So, with that, I'm gonna let Mr. Sal run that music, and after that, if we'll just all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll do a moment of silence.
All right, you ready? You got this.
Please rise.
Okay, I'm gonna start the music, okay?
(singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, did that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
If you'll remain standing as we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While you're standing, we're gonna have a moment of silence, but I want you to keep in mind that we have had some hardships and lost three in particular community members, each very remarkable in their own way, that have deeply woven into the fabric of our school community. Deputy Rod, Mr. Nick Bryant, and Deborah Camalot Wright from our Educational Foundation. So, if you would please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as we have this moment of silence. Swimmers, if you'll just stay here one quick second, everybody else can sit down, and before I hand it over, if the coaches, if you'd just come over here and just, I wanna give you guys an opportunity to brag. So, we have, and I failed to mention, so we had two divers here today, and, okay, wave your hand. So, both, so we had three divers dive at state this year, and I'm gonna start with Coach Henson, because these three divers, I'm not sure that, it's been a while since we had three that went all the way to state. And it is a remarkable testament, because we do something a little unique, we have one coach that coaches all three high schools, and I will tell you, this man has been so dedicated, because he not only coaches them here in Citrus County, he drives them down south, so that he has an opportunity for, that they have an opportunity to dive with some great competition, because otherwise, they would really just be competing against themselves. So, Coach, if you wanna share?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, first of all. I would love to brag on these kiddos real quick. So, we did, we did have three, and I'm excited to, I guess, show them off, so maybe we can get some more. I don't have any Citrus kids, I want, I want a kid from Citrus, at least one next year. And I wanna add to, we got a returner for Crystal River, we got a returner for La Canto, so at least one of each would be amazing. But that being said, Hagan has been in the business now since his second year, he went to state last year and got seventeenth, he went back this year and got tenth, couldn't be prouder of him. Scotty, who's not with us here today unfortunately, was at state at least last year, I'm not sure about the year before that, but at least last year, he got eleventh in the state last year, this year he got tenth, and then Olivia, who has never dove before, has never jumped into a pool except just do cannonballs with the family, and she went from that to eleven dives, and then placed fifth at districts? It doesn't matter. First, I'm sorry, first, sorry, fifth at region, no, first at districts, fifth at region, and then went to state and got seventeen, nineteenth, seventeenth, whatever it was, she went all the way to state, made the first cut, and again, couldn't be any prouder, from going from cannonballs to eleven serious dives, and I would love, if you will, just let them know. I would love to take credit for that, but Hagan was diving before I got there, I can't even take a credit for Olivia, because she's a gymnast, and so if you've got a gymnast, I can, I can work with them. If you don't, we'll still work with them, but it makes it easier if they're gymnasts first. So, that being said, thank you so much. Coach Wells?
So, we had a pretty great season, starting with the girls' performance, they really shined at, district did well, what, were they third? Fourth, yeah, fourth at district, but then went to the region meet and got runner-up at that meet, had a relay, our 400 free relay, qualify for state, and two individuals, Eden Ambrose in the hundred back, and a freshman, Emma Dodge in the 50 free, and anyway, they both, they all swam, swam at state, we had some injuries unforeseen, and came a little short there. The guys had a fabulous meet, all across the board, I wanna just, I mean, we talked about Noah and what he's accomplished, but our relays, we made two relays, the 200 medley relay and the 200 free relay, and they went into this meet, and we didn't know what to expect, qualified in the 200 medley relay for finals, and I don't know that we've ever done that, anybody in the county, it may have happened, and I'm not, I haven't seen it, any evidence of it. And they qualified, they went fastest in the morning, everybody improved in the morning, and then at night, every single one of them, I think, improved at night, and we got sixth place. I say "we" like I did anything. And then the free relay, we didn't swim quite as fast in the morning, and had we swum as fast as we did at night, we had the seventh fastest time, but we ended up, we won consolation with, with, one standout, Noah had the fastest 50 backstroke cut in the, in the meet, period, and he had the fastest 50 free in the 200 free as well. So, he has these silver medals he says he doesn't like, which is a trait sometimes of fast swimmers, but he could, if they were giving him for the fastest split, he could have had a couple more. But, anyway, and placed tenth overall, the guys placed tenth overall, and that was pretty significant as well, so.
The only thing I'll add is, is really just to point out, as part of placing tenth in state is a testament to the commitment that this county has made to keep diving alive here, and those are real points at a state meet, and the fact that for both of our schools, for Crystal River and for La Canto, we would not have placed as high without those divers, and you can look around the state, we are, we are very lucky and blessed to not just have a facility where we can dive, but a coach who can coach with them, and so, thank you on behalf of all of us here, because it's giving us a shot to do big things, you know, where we, we placed, I don't know if any team has ever placed top ten also, when we look at those things, and we, these are the type of things here in this county, these kids grow up now believing that these things are possible. In our small county, we can swim fast, in our small county, we can compete at the state level, and that's a testimony to years of commitment in this county to swimming and diving as a whole, so, on behalf of all of us, thank you.
One other thing, and we also can't do it without support of the county, and we do swim and get support, and our school, and the greatest athletic director, standing among, and anyway, we appreciate that support from principal, athletics, around the county, I know, and every school we have that.
As for Crystal River Pirates, I'm very proud of you, we are missing two of our relay, Lucy Schroeder and Morgan Gibson, as you know, is doing a signing in Ocala. We came second in district girls, we're undefeated this year, we did come just, second in district to the Villages by like two points, so it was a very hard, but it was okay, we knew we were happy against, so, but yeah, we had an undefeated season with the girls, the boys came fourth, I believe, and then in regions, we did in the top ten, I think the girls came, what did we come in?
Fourth.
Fourth, yeah, fourth for the girls in regions, thank you. So, very proud, our diver, Olivia, and Scotty's not here today, he came tenth, and very proud of Olivia, like Coach Henson was saying, that he, she got up there and was, went to state her first year, that's impressive, looking so forward to seeing what she can do next year. So, guys, keep swimming.
I wanna thank you all again very much for coming and taking time out of it, you all are dismissed, you don't have to stay around, you're welcome to, but I'm sure you all wanna go practice.
Thank you, guys.
I wanna know that we're all on a little bit of a thrill, because last night, we had the meeting for the Teacher of the Year and the Support Person of the Year at CF, and then we went to Upward Bound this morning, and I can't imagine how jealous the other counties are of our community that supports these kids, and our faculty and our administration, because it takes all of us working together to keep people like this successful in the pool, and Parks and Rec has been a big part of that, because they, we own the diving board at Bicentennial, but they own the pool, and we've had a great relationship, I started in ninety-five, and we've had a great relationship with Parks and Recs, and it all starts there, so, we're proud of our kids and we wish them well, but it's, it's the love of this community for our kids that makes it all possible, so thank you. So, wonderful opening, okay? So, I need an adoption of the agenda, but I first, Ms. First Reade, we are going to remove from the agenda 9B piggyback bid for promotional products, if you'll mark that off, and...
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda with removal of item 9B.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Frink, to approve the adoption of, by the superintendent. All those in favor?
I just had one, I just wanna thank the superintendent for pulling that off the agenda, you know, I'm a huge proponent of buying locally, and thank you for looking into that.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Citizens' comments, the first citizens' comments are reserved for comments on the items requesting approval on the agenda and the consent agenda. Another opportunity is available at 5:15 or immediately following the public hearing, which is at five o'clock time certain during this meeting, and again, at the end of the business. Okay? Are there any citizens' comments?
No green cards for four.
Pardon me?
None for four.
None? Okay, all right. Then we need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our deputy superintendent, Greco, will read the recognition of donations from our community.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. I'm gonna start with the approval of $48,411 donation to Crystal River Primary School from U.S. Family Foundation, Steven Ropeke Charitable Bequest Foundation, approve the $1,600 donation to Inverness Primary School from Kona Ice, approve the $3,000 donation to Citrus Springs Middle School, Chris River Middle, Inverness Middle, from the Phil Royal Legacy, approve the $600 donation to Citrus High School from Public Supermarket Charities, approve the donation of an assortment of fasteners and storage shelves and drawers valued at $17,635 to La Canto High School from Spar Building and Farm Supply, approve the $10,000 donation to Withlacoochee Technical College from Joseph Bennett Senior Trust, and finally approve the $2,064 donation to Withlacoochee Technical College from the U.S. Family Foundation, Dodge Family Foundation. So, in total, tonight, we have donations of $83,310.
And that's our community loving our kids. Thank you so much. We have time for our superintendent's message?
I hope we have time. So, first, I'd just like to welcome, we have a guest in the audience today, because most recently, the past few months, myself, deputy superintendent Greco, director Derek Bitner, went through what we call master board training with the Florida School Board Association, and I'm gonna turn it over now to April Griffin, who's going to share her words of wisdom with us, and provide us with information about master board training and where we are.
Okay, I don't know about the wisdom part, but I'll try. Thank you for having me, April Griffin, and tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Florida School Boards Association to present you with your certified master board plaque. It's a very big honor for me to do this, I really appreciate it, I appreciate all the time that y'all gave to this, and I hope that your community would appreciate it also. This distinction shows your commitment to working together, because we know, research shows, that when superintendents and school boards work together effectively and efficiently, it's best for the kids and your staff, and you're very well on your, on the road to that already, and I think that we maybe gave you some more little helps and hints that would help you along the way. It's great that you're getting this recognition tonight, on your reorganization night, because going forward, you're setting the pace, and your community does appreciate you, we saw that tonight with the big donations and all of the kids. That's one thing I miss about not being in school board meetings anymore, is the recognition and seeing the kids and all of the things that they do, and the teachers and the coaches too. So, thank you for your support with this, it's been a process, and you've made it very wonderful for me, and congratulations on receiving your certification. So, if y'all don't mind coming down?
Yes.
Congratulations.
You don't wanna get a picture with Dr. McCann?
No, we're okay, yeah, we're good. You guys are elected.
Y'all were in part of it too.
Yeah, you guys part of it, come on up.
Well, that's right, then we need another picture. Every minute. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for all your dedication.
See you in December.
So, we've had a busy month, so I just wanna highlight a couple of things. First of all, I see someone that I want to recognize, Ms. Connie Phillips, would you stand up, Connie? So, Connie, if you don't know, I would say would be the godmother of La Canto School of Art, La Canto High School. So, thank you for that. And this past weekend was the Inverness Art Show, and again, every year, I feel like it's bigger and better, and recognizing all of our schools were there and had a great showing and a great turnout. I didn't see you there, I'm not saying you weren't there, but I, I know it was several days, but I did see Mr. Brown and saw one of the teachers from Crystal River High School, so I had a chance to chat with them. But anyway, I know you are the one that really helped make that happen, and I wanna thank you personally for that, so. But along with that, we've also had Thanksgiving lunches, Rock Crusher was kind of the school that started that, and now we've had multiple schools that have done that, and I give a shout-out to our food services team under Roy Pistone, who has really made sure that when we're offering this, it's not just the ladies in the cafeteria, but it takes the whole staff. We had our finance team there, our services team, HR team, everybody showed up, Ms. Greco even served some food, I don't know if she cooked it, but she did help serve it.
(laughing).
So, it was a great event and great opportunity to interact with the families, and we just... So it was a great event and a great opportunity to interact with the families, and we just really appreciate today. I know I was out at Central Ridge Elementary, and I believe when I spoke to Ms. Romio, she said there were close to 700 people that showed up. And so that shows the dedication of families that care about our schools and care about public schools and the work that we're doing in our school system each and every day. So I appreciate that work and appreciate, I know we have more photos and things to come with that. Also, we participated in the Veterans Day Parade, and as you can see, there's a photo, myself, my wife, in the middle is my grandson. Now, it was cold, so we didn't, it was hard to see our patriotic underneath because we were bundled up, but, and you can see the board was there as well as some of the leadership team that joined us. We also had Pleasant Grove Elementary students there that were marching with us, as well as all of our bands and other schools were involved. There's a banner on the bus celebrating 250 years for the semi-quinqucentennial, so we are very excited to be a part of that, all of our junior ROTC groups. We had a great turnout and was a great day. It was cold, but it didn't rain, so we were happy of that. So anyway, thank you for that participation. So as we move into more parades, we are going to be participating as a school district in the Crystal River Parade and the Inverness Parade. We have the bus with the banner, so board members, I know you have the dates, love to have you join if you're able to. I'll be there, my wife will be there, and hopefully my grandson. I'm trying to work it out with whether he can attend both of them or not, but we'll be there. I've also invited my superintendent council students to attend, my leadership team and any of their family members. So anybody that wants to join, we'd love to have you be a part of it and celebrate the great work of Citrus County School District. So just wanted to share that's coming up. So, you know, I finished my 100-day listening tour, and I had many people say, "So you're not going to listen anymore because it's over." And I said, "No, that doesn't end. We're going to continue listening." So I've developed some councils in which we have those opportunities to have folks listen. So we have a teacher council, which is representative of all of our Teachers of the Year. They serve on that for one year, and we met with that group. We're going to meet throughout the year this year with them. We had a parent council that met, a parent advisory council, and those are representatives from our SAC councils. And then there were some other members that also served on that council, and they're going to serve for two years as part of that. My student councils, we meet with those, the high school students, all three, every month, so we get input from them. We have a support staff council that's meeting next month, so all of the support, school-related employees of the year will have an opportunity to meet with me and share their insights. And then we had business leaders, community leaders, the east side and the west side, and we met with those as well. And again, this is an opportunity to gather input, for me to share some information, but most of it is really for me to listen to them. What are they looking for and what do we need? So I will be sharing as we move forward this year, after I finish with all of the first round of council meetings, with you all, some of the key things that they've talked about, just so you kind of have an oversight of what we're hearing and what are things we want to continue and what are the things we want to think about moving forward. So it's been great, great opportunity to collaborate and meet with others. Did want to share something called Toolbox for Tomorrow's Leaders. So this is a program that I've been working with Dr. Herndon on to focus on giving kids opportunities in middle school to think about a future careers. So Dr. Herndon's reached out to some local businesses. We're going to start this at Inverness Middle School. We have about 24 students, and we're going to do eight weeks. We have anything from plumbing, work with the sheriff's office, the tax collector, drafting, all kinds of different activities for students to participate in at Inverness Middle School. They'll stay after school. We're going to do some small group sessions where they get to interact, some career project exploration, and then we'll talk about soft skills, some employability skills. So it's just a way to kind of touch in with some of our middle school students and start that. My goal eventually is to have this at all of our middle schools throughout the year, but we wanted to start small, so we're going to start at IMS. We're going to work through it, and then we're going to do it throughout the county at the other middle schools. And the intent is to have businesses and community members from those regions. So we're in Crystal River, we're going to have Crystal River businesses and community members be involved so that those local businesses can kind of help engage. And this is an after-school program. Students can sign up to be a part of it, and we're excited about being able to showcase just some opportunities for future planning for kids and the work that we do. But I do appreciate the work of Dr. Herndon. I also want to mention Laura Lindeman's kind of helped make that happen as well, and so I want to thank her for coordinating that and getting that together. Next, very proud of this work, and I want to recognize Dr. Balkh, who's here for this. If you did not know, we are a Purple Star School District. That's a big deal. Here's the bigger deal. We're one of five in the state of Florida. So 67 school districts, Citrus County is one of five that is recognized.
Aren't we the only one that's 100%?
I believe we are the only one that's 100%. I wasn't going to brag on that, but yes, that is true. So what that means is we recognize the support of unique needs of families. We help military families with challenges and navigate to provide different resources throughout that. But more than just being a Purple Star School District, we also have what we call Purple Star Schools of Distinction. And in the state of Florida, there's 202. Now, there's a lot more schools in the state of Florida than 202, right? But there's only 202 that are considered Florida Purple Star campuses. Citrus County has 22 of those campuses. In fact, every single school in Citrus County, and I think as Dr. Balkh has said, we are one of the only districts that has 100% participation. So that is something to be proud of in Citrus County, our support of veterans and our support of Purple Heart. But thank you, Dr. Balkh, for all the work you did to make that happen. Great, great work. But I think we, as a district, should be proud of that fact. And then the final piece that I do want to share is last night, we had an opportunity to recognize and celebrate all of our Teacher of the Years and school-related employees of the year, and that's our Galaxy of Stars, our Night to Shine, and really celebrate the great work of our teachers and staff. And we recognized Michelle Cleary from Hernando Elementary, who was the 2027 Teacher of the Year. You may wonder, why is it 2027 when it's not 2027? The reason is because all of this coordinates with the National Teacher of the Year process. And so we have to work through and get to a certain point before we get to that year. So it's all done way ahead, but then Michelle will then go on to compete for the state Teacher of the Year. If selected, then she would compete for the National Teacher of the Year. So we're proud of her. And then you can see for our school-related employee of the year, Lynette Kalis from Withlacoochee Technical College. And they both did outstanding jobs last night. When they were asked to speak, they didn't want to speak and weren't sure what to say, but when they spoke, it was great words of wisdom, and we were so happy to have them representing Citrus County as our Teacher and School-related Employee of the Year. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Scott. Next on our agenda is Mrs. Lau.
I think Steve's going to do it for her.
Oh, Mr.? Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Lau's, her daughter's giving birth tomorrow, so she spent a little time with her today before things get a little bit crazy over there. So I told her I'm happy to step in here and do this for her. So, good afternoon, everyone. We're asking now for your approval of the support and structural recommendations laid out on the Golden Rod.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Farady to approve the personnel information and structural and support on the Golden Rod.
It was actually Mr. Frink.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It was motion by Mr. Frink.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Farady. Any discussion? Any questions?
I just want to say, good job, because seeing all these names and seeing the amount that are filled.
Yes.
It's nice.
Yeah. For our visitors, the Golden Rod is also available for you on the back row table. There's been no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And send our thanks to Ms. Lau. Next on our agenda is approval of the November 2025 surplus list for November.
Yes, that list was revised.
Hi, Ms. Cox.
Yes. So I'm here to seek approval of the revised surplus list for November.
I had a question, and I know it has to do with the telescope that came off, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And where are we with that? We're going to check into it as far as its use.
Yes, because it was, we believe in 2023, it was donated, so we want to get some more information on, one, where that donation came from, because some of the staff that were here at that time are no longer here, and then try to figure out if there is a way, because it can only be used at night, and so none of the schools were able to utilize it since we don't have school at night. But we're thinking maybe there might be some family events or Title I or STEM nights or something where we can do that. So we just want to do a little bit more research before we surplus it.
And I thought it was more than one telescope that he donated.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about it. I think there's one that we have here. So, again, hence the research to figure out a little bit more.
Actually, AES, I believe, was donated one at that same time, so there, because I remember that donation pretty.
Okay. So that was what the revision was on that list.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 2025 surplus list.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the November 2025 surplus list of November 18, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? But thank you for looking into that because I'm pretty sure there was more than one telescope donated. I can't remember the man's name, but it would be in minutes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and my next item is the informational-only, the financial statements for September. Those were sent out to you guys late last week.
And thank you again for that, you know. I almost didn't know what day of the week it was.
You're welcome. And of course, September, we haven't started receiving any property tax revenues, so it's, they just don't look that great at the moment, but we're getting there. So, any questions about that?
No, and I just have to say, Ms. Cox, I'd had, she's been wonderful because I had some questions on some SAC questions, and just appreciate how prompt you are and detailed and just were able to help our schools and our students out.
Of course. Yeah. Thanks.
Hi. Mr. Percy? Educational Services for approving funds for Soliant Health?
Good evening, board members. I'm asking for approval for an increase in our Soliant funds. I realize there wasn't a lot of additional information that was provided, so just for a little background, in the beginning of the year, we approved a contract for Soliant for $234,000 for deaf, hard of hearing and occupational therapist contract. We recently had one of our SLPs resign, and so this increase that we're asking for is to fund a contract SLP with the funding coming out of general funding and IDA that would have previously covered our direct hire.
Yes, so I appreciate it, and just wanted to clarify because I know it was, it didn't have some of the documentation, but we're good, and talked a little bit about it behind, you know, before the meeting. So I think everything's fine here. Basically, we had a full-time, we had an employee that resigned or is no longer with us that we need to fill that position with a speech-language pathologist, and you want to contract it through Soliant. And it's technically, I guess it's kind of like it's budgeted, but I know it's added fund to their, it's added to theirs, so it kind of threw me when it said you wanted more money, but it was budgeted, so. But I appreciate the clarification on how that works with this company for, and this is for, only for speech-language pathologists for one position, right?
Correct.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve funds increase for Soliant Health.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd and a second by Mr. Farady to approve funds to increase the Soliant Health revenue, I guess. Money. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Percy, for taking care of our kids.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, on the agenda, we need to approve the purchase of a master subscription for NOBE4 and SA. The miracle man of the computer.
Good afternoon, Dr. Heber, Deputy Superintendent Greco, school board members. I come before you today to request the approval of the master subscription agreement for NOBE4 as well as the purchase of NOBE4.
Madam Chair, before we have a motion, I did have some questions. If you don't mind, can I?
Of course. Yes.
So, you know, obviously, we're talking about almost $50,000 here, and this is a new program, correct?
It is a new program. We have had it in the past. It's, we have an existing platform that we're looking to upgrade our functionality, and that's why we're looking to upgrade to NOBE4.
Okay. But this is mainly, this subscription is mainly the test for making sure people don't click on sites that are, that could have a virus, is that right?
Yes. NOBE4 not only does phishing security, which is on the technical end, but it also is a cybersecurity training platform that it adapts, it's dynamic, and it's targeted to the department. It's not kind of broad like our current training. It's targeted for specific weaknesses that, you know, finance may fall victim to, HR may fall victim to, curriculum may fall victim to, and it adapts over time as it gets results back. It tailors that to target those weaknesses in your cybersecurity.
So the existing program we're using, the contract is going to run out on it? Is that we're not renewing it?
It's actually already ran out. It expired at the end of October.
It's, okay. So I know this is a little bit more than what we previously had, but from the use of our past software, you see a need for this?
Yes. The way this cybersecurity training works with NOBE4 and that it can adapt and target to specific departments within the school system, it's much more tailored. So finance gets much more directed stuff, directed testing and phishing simulation for finance, same for human resources, transportation maintenance, they're tailored for the individual departments.
If I could help, you know, my previous position as city manager of Crystal River, and even when I was down at Swift Mud, NOBE4, well, my biggest nightmare when I was city manager was somebody clicking on a link and crippling our system. So we brought NOBE4 in because of my experience down at Swift Mud with them, and they were so thorough and so amazing about the amount of, they sent out fake tests to people, and they try and get you to click on things. If you don't, the IT folks get a notification that, yeah, they clicked on something, and then they, you can set it up, it's very fluid, you can set them up to, okay, now they're going to have to go through this training to be able to work in it all.
Which is similar to what we've had in the past or what the last subscription, but you're just saying this is more tailored to areas.
It's much more targeted, more adaptable. It actually learns, so as the departments get better and start, you know, shoring up weaknesses, it may find other weaknesses in their cybersecurity footprint and start targeting that. So it's designed to adapt with the training, and the phishing simulation adapts, and it focuses on those weak points to shore up everything.
Yeah. You know, I did not like the contract. I mean, it's the finest print 14-page contract I've ever seen. Normally, it'd be like three times that large, but, you know, it is, I guess it's been reviewed, correct?
I spent hours and hours going back with NOBE4.
Okay.
So the bond and things, it was kind of backseat to the content, which took a lot of back and forth.
Oh, yeah.
But I think the contracts and the terminology and the terms are the best they were going to get.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure about the channel partner purchases, because I was treating, tried to read through this contract. It's like, are you kidding me? I mean, these are attorneys doing their best job to protect themselves, right? And I just wanted to make sure that we had a little information that this is a $50,000 purchase that we need and that we have reviewed the terms of the contract. Do you know anything about, it says in the event customer requires subscription services through a channel partner, all payment-related terms will be set forth in the political agreement. I don't know what, what is a channel partner? Any idea?
I do not know.
subscription services through a channel partner, all payment-related terms will be set forth in the political agreement. I don't know, what is a channel partner? Any idea?
I do not know what it means by channel partner.
So it doesn't seem applicable to what we're doing here. The other thing about ours, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, we're getting it for a year and we're paying upfront. So the payment's going to be made. And at that point, you know, one of the terms I negotiated is if there is a breach, I'm always thinking about data breach. So if there's a data breach or something like that, they wanted to, you know, cap at no recovery, because of course they did. But we got it up to essentially three times the contract. So if they breach and cost us up to $150,000, we can go and recover that. As to the clear channel part, it doesn't seem applicable to us. It just seemed like one of their boilerplate terms.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate the fact that you spent a large amount of time reviewing it.
And a magnifying glass.
So the one thing that I have to say is, you know, with NOBE4 is we need to be more robust. And I think, I don't think there's anyone up here that doesn't believe that that's the case. I think that the technology department has reviewed this by saying, okay, what is a better product to both provide assessing our staff, particular to the duties in which they perform, which is essential, and then providing that data to you all so that we can have both combined professional development, but also conversations to ensure that we have the safety and security. Because as we know, this is a lot more than what we are looking to improve our training with. The risk of just a small breach, which is very easy for even the best of us to be able to easily go, oh, that looks real. Definitely, you know, Ms. Greco told me I should just give my social security number over to her. And, or whatever the social engineering. The reality is today, more than spam, it is social engineering. It is pretending to be people that we aren't. And the only way we're going to do that is to have better people be answering those questions. So I'm grateful that you all are bringing this forward. I think this is the right product for right now.
I agree.
Do we have a motion then?
Not yet.
With that, then I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve the purchase and master subscription agreement for NOBE4.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Frink to approve the purchase and master subscription agreement of the NOBE4. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, South, for all you do.
Thank you for your time today.
All right, Attorney Legal Matters?
And I'm going to defer to Dr. Heber, if that's okay.
It's okay.
So I can be an attorney today? Is that what I'm hearing?
Let's not get crazy.
So I'd like to take a moment and recognize someone that has been serving our school district as a school board attorney since 2006 till 2025. So, Mr. Bradshaw, I know you're not used to this, but can you please come up here?
He said please.
The flat states, R. Wesley Bradshaw, thank you for your service and commitment to the Citrus County School Board as school board attorney. Your legal expertise and support have made a lasting impact on the students, staff, community of Citrus County. Citrus County School Board, 2006, 2025.
Here, here.
We need to get the board in there.
Hillary, do you want us to stand?
Come up, come all the way.
We can do that.
Okay. Bring you back, Joe.
Yep.
I don't know, do we want you?
I just kind of hope you're going to wait till after you hire the new guy. So I didn't say we are really going to.
Then he'll stop you.
Then he'll stop me, exactly. I don't think I was this nervous the first meeting I came here back in '06. It has been my pleasure and one of the best things that have ever happened to me to be a school board attorney in the state of Florida, especially for this board. They, I don't believe any of y'all were on the board, you know, back then and all, but they gave me an opportunity. Never thought I'd do this job. You know, it wasn't on my bucket list, but I'm sure glad that I ended up becoming a school board attorney. It's made me a better person, a much better attorney. I've got to work with wonderful people. People don't understand a school district, you know, that's, everyone is trying to row the boat in the same direction. Everybody's here for the kids. They're here for the community. They're here to make everything better. I'm a product of this school system. I went through kindergarten, all the way through high school here. My kids did also. And it was my pleasure to serve y'all. I tried to, my philosophy in my head was that if y'all wanted to do something, I tried to figure out a way of saying yes, if it was legal. But not afraid to say no if it wasn't. But it has been just one of the best experiences of my life. And I really appreciate everyone in this room. I appreciate all the staff, all the employees of the Citrus County School District. They are wonderful to work with. I cannot, could not ask to have had a better job for the last 19 years. Thank you.
I have to ask you to wait just one more moment. I have to ask you to just stay one more moment. We go to state school board meetings in January and, December and June. And one of the breakout sessions, three years ago, four years ago, three or four years ago, Mr. Bradshaw was leading one of the breakout sessions on school board attorney law. And Ginger Bryant on the board then, and I decided that we're going to go just sit in the back of the room and watch Wes. And the room was full of other school board attorneys. And as Wes was telling them what they should know to be school board attorneys, I'm talking about school board attorneys that are hired already. They're already school board attorneys. And this man was telling them what they should know. And they were amazed. And so we had, again, Citrus County had one of the premier school board attorney for 19 years, and we thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Mr. Bradshaw, I can just.
I think Ms. Powers, Mr. Murray were on the board when they hired me, so thank y'all.
And Mr. Bradshaw, I'm correct, you're not retiring as an attorney.
No, I'm not.
You're just stepping down as the school board attorney. So you're still practicing, which means your phone still works, which means if we need to call you, we can still call you.
Except on vacation. It'll be the first time in 19 years that I won't get a phone call from y'all on vacation.
So don't go anywhere because some, you know, some of us have to show some, you know, appreciation for you. You know, I will have the pleasure, and I told Mr. Bradshaw this early, I have the pleasure of being his first new school board member. So I'm one of the first that, and when.
Lost my hair.
That's exactly right. Because when we had our first conversation, the first one thing that Mr. Bradshaw as the attorney does as soon as you win election is say, congratulations. Now you are in the sunshine. You can't say anything to anyone. So he does his job day one with that. But I remember when I talked to him and I kind of said, well, you know what? I want to, I want to share about the, you know, the happenings of the school district. And I want to, you know, go on this thing called the World Wide Web and write a blog. And I started talking about technology and he just was like, you're going to be a challenge. And, but we have, we have had a professional relationship that I am so grateful for. Because I've been on both sides of you saying, yeah, we can do that. Or no, we're not going to do that. And you have always been available. You have always had a student-centered approach to everything. You care very deeply for the school district. This has been a passion for you. While maybe people think, oh, wow, it's a school board attorney. They must do really well. He spends a lot of time not billing us and really giving us counsel in ways that I will always appreciate. And I thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, every time I called, you were there. You answered your phone. You didn't say, hey, I'll call you back. You answered it and answered my questions, so. And I really appreciate it. And I've known you for a very long time, even when I was a juvenile probation officer. So I appreciate all you've done for our students in our county.
I was not one of his probation.
No. He was an attorney.
No, Wes, I've worked with a lot of government attorneys and you're like the cream of the crop. It's when, you know, I've worked with ones that, no, you just can't do that because there's too much risk. But no, you're the guy that says, if you want no risk, this is what you got to do. But if you're willing to take some, which is a lot of what we need to do, this is where you need to go. And that's a rare breed in an attorney, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I too wanted to say, Wes, I appreciate always answering my calls, you know, getting back to me if you were busy, you know. That always meant a lot. And I know, you know, we didn't always see eye to eye on everything, but I thought we treated people, we each other with respect.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate your advice, legal advice over the years.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank y'all.
It is now 5 o'clock and I'm going to recess the school board meeting and I'm going to open up the public hearing. Mr. Dixon.
We'll get right to it.
We appreciate all you do, too.
Yes, I started about the same time Wes did. And I really appreciate his counsel, too. He's taught me a lot. The first item today for the public hearing is a policy update to 8.44 School Food Service Funds. The NEFEC recommended update is needed for submitting federal lunch program applications. The Food Service and Purchasing Department have reviewed the recommended updates and some minor modifications were made. The Policy Informs Committee reviewed it on July 17 and it was presented at your August workshop. The minor modifications are highlighted if you have any questions.
No questions? Is there any public comment on policy 8.44 School Food Service Funds? Any public comment? Last time for public comment on policy 8.44 School Food Service Funds.
I'll make a motion we approve and adopt policy 8.44 School Food Service Funds.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kirk Frink to approve and adopt policy 8.44 School Food Service Funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Next item is a new policy, 7.701 Purchasing and Bidding Federal Grants and Funds. This policy was generated by the Purchasing Department based on a NEFEC recommended update to policy 7.70 Purchasing and Bidding. It was determined that a separate additional policy is needed. The Policy Informs Committee reviewed this in July and it was presented to you at your August workshop.
Any public comment on policy 7.701 Purchasing and Bidding Federal Grant Funds? Second call for public comment on policy 7.701 Purchasing and Bidding Federal Grant and Funds. Third and final call for public comment?
Move approval of policy 7.701 Purchasing and Bid of Federal Grants and Funds.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Farid to approve and adopt policy 7.701 Purchasing and Bidding Federal Grants and Funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Round and roll.
Okay. The third one is policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. This is a new policy. It was requested by the, to clarify, the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Compliance and Policy Language. The Policy Informs Committee reviewed it in July and a revision was made pursuant to the board workshop for, on page two, for some clarification. Other than that, there were no changes.
Is there any public comment on policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment? Second call for public comment on policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. Final call for public comment on policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. Hearing none?
I'll make a motion we approve policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability in Employment.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frink, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve and adopt policy 2.71 Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, Mr. Dixon, again?
And this is the final policy update for this evening. It's a policy 2.70 Prohibiting Discrimination Including Sexual and Other Forms of Harassment. The policy update was generated by the HR department to provide consistency with the language in the newly created policy 2.71. The Policy Informs Committee reviewed it back in July and the definition for the Title IX Coordinator was added for clarification. And this policy was presented at your August workshop.
Asking for public comment on policy 2.70 Prohibiting Discrimination Including Sexual and Other Forms of Harassment? Any public comment on policy 2.70 Prohibition of Discrimination Including Sexual or Other Forms of Harassment? Last and final call for public comment on policy 2.70 Prohibiting Discrimination Including Sexual or Other Forms of Harassment? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion we approve changes to policy 2.70.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frink, a second by Mr. Kennedy to approve and adopt policy 2.70 Prohibiting Discrimination Including Sexual and Other Forms of Harassment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That will close the public hearing and we will reopen the board meeting. And with the conclusion of our public hearing, it's not quite 5:15, which is a time certain for public comment. But we can start it because it says we can.
Was there any more legal matters that we had to cover or not?
I can't follow that up. That's nothing, I have nothing else.
He's getting bossy already. Okay. Hearing none. We read this comment before, any public comment way before my terms. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities or vulgarities and refrain from words or statements from which their usual construction and common acceptance tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak must fill out a green card, which are located in the back of the room on the table. And the chair calls the first speaker and my timekeeper just left the. But you can, you can go ahead and keep the time when they start. My first green card, Christian Gallery. Do you want me to identify your topic, Christian? The importance of advocacy.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members, Dr. Heber, Ms. Greco. I'm Christian Gallery, science teacher at the Emerson Middle School, president of Citrus County Education Association. After months of negotiations and significantly more excitement than usual, the year's economic bargain and our contract await your approval. It isn't the most robust deal we've ever had, but I can honestly say that through the ups and downs, we came to what I believe to be the best office available. That said, the margin of victory we saw when counting the ratification ballots was down 20 points from where it normally is. Teachers and support staff may understand the constraints that forced us into the circumstances that we see before us, but they certainly don't like. but they certainly don't like them. With that said, I hope that the district as a whole, school board members, administrators, teachers, and support staff can come together and engage those in Tallahassee who make the decisions that lead us to circumstances like those that we find ourselves in. CCA members are doing their part. They're writing more and more letters. They're meeting with state representatives to advocate for what our schools need the most. I know from our conversations with Dr. Hebert that our requests to lawmakers are far more alike than they are different. I encourage all of us, board members and administrators and staff, to advocate for more funding for our public schools so that we don't see a repeat of what happened this year. Lamenting the situation and soldiering on can't be enough anymore. We all have a responsibility to voice the needs of our students and staff to those who can fulfill them. I, for one, have had quite enough of spicy bargaining for my entire career. I would love to see our district receive the funds it needs, and our employees see future economics, excuse me, see future economic bargains that are closer to what they deserve. If I can be a resource to any of you in any way, I, of course, welcome the opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Christian. The next green card I have is for Darryl Reno.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me be here this evening. Want to just thank Dr. Hebert, members of the board. My name's Pastor Darryl, and I am here on behalf of a group from our community, community members who deeply love the school district. And we are, we're really proud of this school district, I gotta say. When we go around the state, it is one of the things that we get to just boldly proclaim is how proud we are to be members of this community and this school district. And I'm here tonight to ask the board to consider naming our current district building, the one that we are in, the Sam Himmel District Services Center. For three decades, Sam gave her heart and energy and leadership to students and families in Citrus County. And under her leadership, we've seen historic gains in student performance, major expansions in career and technical programs, investment in teacher development, strong partnership with local businesses and nonprofits, safe welcoming campuses, and a culture of stability and excellence and compassion for our community in a way that I think is remarkable. I think we're able to stand on a foundation that was built here over the last 30-plus years. Most of us in this room know firsthand how Ms. Himmel didn't just hold an office, but she helped to shape the identity of Citrus County's school system and Citrus County as a whole as a reflection of that. Her steady leadership carried the district through hurricanes, through growth challenges, through budget challenges, through challenges in changing educational landscapes, and consistently made decisions with kids at the center of everything that she did. If I wanted to, I could sit and talk about the awards and things that she won throughout her career, not to be limited to, but she was also named Superintendent of the Year at some, at one point here. I also want to mention briefly that it would not be an unusual step for our school district to name functions and places after someone who's still alive. We have done that and set the precedent of doing that, and I think that we should do that now. We've done that with Earl Brammitt Stadium over in Krista River. We have the Dr. Glenn Press Box here. We also have the Vicki Overman Field here. So we've set a precedent of already doing that within Citrus County's school system, so I don't think that's out of the ranges of outcomes. And so I just, I just want to bring that to our attention. Several individuals who are still living have had that happen, and so there's clear precedent to recognize people while they're still living. And can I just say, as a pastor, can we stop doing that after people die? They don't see it. Let's honor people who have accomplished well and built a foundation for our community while they're here to actually enjoy being honored. And so as far as the practical side, I understand when you make a request like this, the very first thing those who are responsible for being good stewards for our school system should ask is, how do we pay for that? And you would be irresponsible not to ask for that. My understanding is that this type of naming falls under the capital funding, which currently has the capacity for signage update. And in other words.
That is, that is three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next card is from Ken Henkel.
Good evening, esteemed school board members. I appreciate your service here. You people dedicate your lives. I can appreciate that because I was in Reness City Council for 18 years. I happened to be lucky to grow up with Sam Himmel. No, I didn't grow up, I moved here in '65. I graduated in '68 with Martha Henkel, who was an employee of the Citrus County Schools for 31 years. And I was a volunteer for 31 years. But Sam Himmel means so much to this community. She gave her heart and her soul to it. And everything she did when she was superintendent was for the kids and the betterment of the community. And you look at the product of all those who graduated from Citrus High. I was a graduate, and saw what an impact it had. And people leave, but some of us come back. And it's very unique to see someone of her esteem stay in that position for so long and do such a phenomenal job. And to be named Superintendent of the Year of the State of Florida is of very high esteem, and she always was there for everyone. And I just want to say, we really need to name this building the Sam Himmel Building. And she very much deserves it. And like you said, she needs it done while she's still alive. And I have three letters that was also written. Jewel Lamb wrote letters concerning this. I gotta think of all of them here. Rocky Hensley, Pam Stewart, former Commissioner of Education. So these are esteemed people, but I would appreciate to see it there. And thank you for your excellence that you do, and thank you for your dedication. Thank you.
The next green card I have is from Pastor Doug Alexander.
First of all, thank you so much, and I appreciate every one of you, and I appreciate the job that you guys do for this community, really. I know that we do have the best Citrus County school system and also the great administration. I agree with Pastor Darryl. I just want to say that, that I agree with what he said today. And I've known Sam all of her life, and we both are products of Citrus County's school system. And I think it's a great honor that we honor people while they are still living. So I just want to say that I got a hospital board meeting that I'm running late to, but I appreciate each of you guys for what you do, and thank you, guys. Please consider this, and I can be reached off. And I want to say thank you for Wes. He's been an outstanding young man and outstanding attorney, and he buys peas from me, so he's a good guy. Thank you, guys. God bless you.
Thank you. The next green card I have is for Amanda Brown.
Hello. All right. Last month, an athletic director from a high school in your school district made a call to allege that a LaCanto high school football coach was guilty of recruiting violations for housing a student athlete. And I'm assuming that you're all familiar with this topic. It made the rounds on social media, and it stirred up a lot of controversy, and it was even featured on the news. And the news even was able to independently verify that this took place, that a rival high school athletic director made this call. And we now know that this was all basically cleared up. This student was able to win a unanimous appeal, and that the coach was able to win a modified appeal. So I'm wondering now why this all ever actually even had to happen. So I think that, what I'm saying is that as a board, I think you guys need to pay attention to this because the community is still very divided on this issue. You have a county that's very upset about this, and this isn't the first time. This is the second time in less than five years that you've had accusations of recruiting violations that seem to always go in one direction, and they seem to always benefit only one side. You owe it to your citizens, I think. I think you owe it to your students to really find out what's happening, to really find out who's making these accusations, to really find out why they're making these accusations. Because this student's living situation was well-known for two years. So why did this complaint happen now? Do we really think that this information came to light just suddenly? Just suddenly it happened to come to light on the night that LaCanto beat their county rival 47 to 0, and that that athletic director just happened to make that complaint on the following Monday morning? Just conveniently? Are people really just that petty? Because I don't think so. I think that that means that that athletic director actually violated the principles of professional conduct. And I think that that needs to be investigated. And if that's not enough, then I think that you should really ask those boys, those football players, how they feel about it. Because really, it's the students who lose out on this. The students are the ones who lose out when it comes to people's egos. Because I don't think this had anything to do with recruiting violations. I think it had to do with wanting to get that coach fired. That's my opinion, and I really think that's a lot of people's opinions. And I think that we, as a community, are, deserve to know what happened and deserve to know why this is not being investigated. Thank you.
I have no more green cards for public comment. And seeing none, then we close public comment and go back, and I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval.
It's on consent.
Huh?
On consent.
Okay, we don't need to approve the minutes? Oh, they were in the consent? Okay. All right. Then we will close the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board, and we will open the organizational meeting.
No.
Oh, other business to come before the board? Before we close.
So, Ms. Greco, did you have anything before? Okay. I just, no problem. Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the amazing job of the Veterans Parade as you all had had a chance to visit and participate in that. Again, Dr. Hebert, you highlighted most of it, but I do want to just also thank those. Mr. Bitner, who marshaled the vehicles. Mr. Chuck Dixon, Dr. Al Bach, Deidre Newton, Tracy Bitner, Brian Devane. And my notes just left me as I did that. And Jessica Price and Chuck Price. They, you know, spent time with that, and I just do appreciate them. Last night's Galaxy of the Stars, what an amazing event. I know it's impossible to imagine, but it was even better when you walk in. It's my favorite thing to do. And the Educational Foundation, you know, you are, you are our true partners. You are those who we go and ask for when we need, and you make a difference every single day. Ms. Burdette, you're here, so I get to say this to you. Thank you. You, your team, and Amy, if she can do a better job, she, I don't know that it's possible, but every time again, you walk in there and you make all of those teachers and those school sports staff feel so special and so unique. So I thank you. I had an opportunity the last couple of weeks to continue in a lot of the work that I've been doing in Florida K-12 AI Task Force, which is out of the University of Florida. This is a task force that we also do in partnership with the Florida School Board Association's AI in Education Committee, where we work around the state with a number of the leaders and innovators in that space. Last week, we were in Acoe County, I'm sorry, Akalusa County, and we were with the National Charter School Conference that we also co-located with. We really had an opportunity with the conversation to talk about how AI in education is driving education within Florida. Who accompanied us well was Kathy Androwski and her team of technology specialists, who are also serving on this board. One of the biggest conversations that we're going to continue to have is the role that generative AI in particular is having in our curriculum, in our operations, in our efficiencies, in our data analytics. It is crystal clear that the charter schools are embracing artificial intelligence in education. Our private schools are. And around the state, the movement within the public schools of embracing it is one that is being driven at the Department of Education level, which has really spurred the work that is being done. I will tell you that why this is important is you have the President of the United States, the U.S. Department of Education, you have the Florida Department of Education, and you have school districts all around the country all saying a very similar thing, and that is, this is a game changer like we have never seen before. Why this is such a big deal, for a lot of you who may or may not know, November 30, which is just around the corner, three years ago, one of the biggest game changers of this little app for generative AI called ChatGPT released. That has been, for a lot of people, the first exposure that they've had to generative AI. By May of the next year, you had the Florida Virtual School launching its first AI course for education in Florida. Later in May of 2024, you had Governor DeSantis pass, which was HB 1361. This was a law that expanded our Florida statute 1002.321 Digital Learning. This was to transform the power of generative AI and large language models, specifically referring to AI in education. This was a bill that was actually largely championed by Doctors Ralph Mazzullo and was one of the first AI legislation, not just in Florida, but in the country with regards to this. You flash forward to now the work that's being done, and next month, when we go to the Florida School Board Association and FAD's conference, you are going to be immersed in some of the most advanced conversations in AI in education. When I say this is a game changer, I don't want to sound alarmist. I don't want to sound minimizing. But this is like the most customization that we are ever going to see. The areas that we talk about, differentiated learning for our ESE students, to our English second language learners, that's just a part of it. That's the obvious. What it's going about changing, and what the charter schools talked about, is it is going to allow for customization of individual family cultures innovate, to be able to embed that into our standard curriculum. Families will be able to choose the things and the information that they want their own child to be able to study about and do that while delivering it in state standards and individualized to every single student. That's like nothing we have seen. To be able to have my child have stories that they want, but specifically ones that maybe involve religious tones, cultural, you know, things that are important to me and my family, are all going to be part of the future of education. And so I would encourage you all, when you go to this conference, this is going to be different. This is going to be very eye-opening. There's going to be sessions on individualized tools, policies in learning, that are a big part of it. The legislation that's being crafted now, unlike previous years where it felt like you had charter schools on one side, private schools maybe on another, and traditional schools in another area, there's a lot of alignment in the thinking when it comes to adapting of AI in education. And one of the biggest things that I think that we are going to see is legislation that doesn't as much prohibit, but rather mandate and encourage its use within education, within operations, within teacher improvement and efficiencies, and as well as in curriculum delivery. So I just feel like it's important for us to be mindful of this. And with that, Mr. Bradshaw, again, thank you, sir, for your service. You will, as, you know, we talk about in Florida School Board, you leave your legacy within policy, and you have left great legacy for us in protecting our students.
Wow. It's hard to, you're so hard to follow. You know, when I was, when I was on the campaign trail, you know, I use AI every day. It's part of my business, and it's integral to my business. And I had a long talk with then Representative Mazzullo, soon to be, hopefully Senator Mazzullo. And the state is really embracing that. I mean, there's, they're putting a lot of resources toward it, money, and it's coming our way. And not, not, not to this level, but I almost entune it to, you know, when we all got this pop. pocket calculators and we're allowed to bring those into the schools, it's kind of that but on steroids, it's a whole nother level. So thank you for paying attention to that. You know, I've always, we're looking at the rearview mirror now and seeing summer wave off into the sunset, looking at the holiday season. And I'm just so blessed to be up here with you folks. You know, starting with the Galaxy of the Stars last night, to be in a room full of just folks and educators that just love these kids. And seeing the energy there was just, it was so touching to me. Upward Bound this morning, watching the kids. My favorite seat is the seat we get because we're in the front table and we're right behind where the parents are, the paparazzi taking pictures of their kids. And just seeing how proud they are just touches me. And so just thank you for letting me be here with you all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Yes, so much to be thankful for as we look ahead to Thanksgiving and where we are as a nation. I think, you know, Mr. Kennedy, I too am excited about the future with almost kind of a new industrial revolution with AI and quantum computing, robotics, cryptocurrencies, all those things that are coming up. It's exciting. And so we need to be prepared and ready. I know, Dr. Hebert, there's been discussions, but I do hope that there is legislation to guide the path because it is, it will be a challenge for us ahead, there's no doubt. And school safety is still a priority of ours, you know, and that's something too that I hope we keep our eye on. And I know we are, but at the state level with legislation for school safety. But again, I'm thankful to be a part of this board and this community and the school district. I want to say the Veterans Day Parade was excellent and the banners, the semi-quintcentennial banners that we're celebrating in this school district to talk about the sacrifices that were made for our freedom and to teach kids about the backbone of our country, our Constitution. You know, I know Dr. Hebert was at the Emerson Primary School Veterans Day program and, you know, they sang the preamble to the Constitution. It was a really cool song that they sang there at that. So it's exciting to see us promoting this country and patriotism. The Purple Heart District that we, I think we were actually the first, wasn't, weren't we, Thomas, the first Purple Heart School District in the country?
We are the first.
And now this is, I know they've kind of changed it to the Purple Star, right? So, but we were the first Purple Heart School District.
Well, no, so the Purple Heart School District is still another thing.
Okay.
And we were the first. And I'm proud because this board has been a big part of that.
Yes.
But the DNA that started that is really what's led to, you know, the schools all being done. And again, because I'm competitive as all of us are here, there's some others that are the Purple Star School Districts, but they don't have 100% of the schools.
Right. I know, it's a great, it's really impressive. So, you know, that's, that's something that we have in this county that's very special. The Galaxy of the Stars event, Education Foundation did another fantastic job as we celebrate those of our employees who excel and who are recognized by their peers. So congratulations to Ms. Colise and to Ms. Cleary and those people that were there. It was a great event last night and we just showed you the support of our community that we have to recognize those individuals. I've been attending SAC committee meetings. I know the calendar has been a part of that and I guess that's going to be at our next meeting, improve the calendar. So it'll be, I'll be interested to see those results of the SAC committees and how they voted. And I'm happy that our collective bargaining agreements were ratified and have been approved today. I know that was on the consent agenda. But I know that there was progress, I think, made with the, between the administration and the union as we look down the road next year, maybe to get started a little sooner in negotiations. But also, a lot of it, I think, you know, people have to realize there's only a certain amount of money. So man, it'd be great if we, if we had more, more of that through the FFP, through legislation. So I guess we'll see how that all shakes out. But again, I appreciate this board and I'm thankful for all my many blessings.
Thank you. I got to give a shout out to a couple people. Shonda, everything, everything you touch. We had a great time at that Dragon Boat Race, Dawn and I. You did a phenomenal job out there. I did not know it was such a big thing, but now I know. So you did a great, great job last night.
International.
Yes, I didn't know that. There were teams from all over and it was, it was fascinating. So thank you for inviting us to partake and volunteer. We will be back. I see you already have it on the calendar for next year. And last night, to see so many teachers that I have worked with over the years as an SRO and that they're still giving their all to our students, it's exciting. I also have been attending SAC committees for all of mine and judging science fairs, attending school health committees and school mental health committees. November, December is very busy for us and I can't be more proud of the group that we're working with up here that care about our students. Tomorrow, I have a Zoom meeting for Safety and Security from FSBA. Every month, I try to get a speaker. I've had somebody that worked with America's Most Wanted, John Walsh. I've had Darren Norris from the Vice Chancellor in School Safety. Tomorrow, I have Hunter Pollock, who works for the U.S. Department of Justice. Hunter's sister was shot in Parkland on February 14th in 2018. He is now an attorney with U.S. DOJ, but more importantly, I've been friends with his family since I was in elementary school. Him and his, his dad and I have been very close, did sleepovers at his house. So to have Hunter as my guest speaker is sad that he has to be here, but I think the way that the future's going and Department of Justice is getting involved with school safety too and looking into it. And I know, Thomas, we're bringing AI in school safety together in any of your future meeting. So another shout out I got to give is Ms. Colleen Strickland. She has jumped into that position in CTE. I'm attending an airframe and power plant with the county and trying to team up with them as, you know, in the airport and everything. And another one is Roy. Roy does a bang-up job with these Thanksgiving dinners and his meal with us and while being a president of his own, I don't know what the equivalent of FSBA is in the food world, but he's now the president and he just really, really gives to our, our students in our county and we're very blessed to have him. So on with more SAC meetings and more things to come as we go to FSBA again.
Yeah. Well, I have to go back track to Home Assasa, the Veterans Memorial that's across from the Home Assasa Elementary. Because Principal Bays and Ms. Richardson had the first and second graders lead the pledge, sing the anthem, and then they sang a song that said, "We love our veterans." And actually, you could see all of the guys, even Commander Hunt, just moved by those little kids. They had, they had colored pictures of veterans and they were distributing them all to everybody that was there. And then to top it off, we had the SAC meeting at Home Assasa Elementary, home of our superintendent. And they invited Mrs. Richardson to bring the kids following the SAC meeting and sing their songs again. So we had more parents at that SAC meeting. And two of my schools, Rock Crusher and Home Assasa, have now kind of joined their PTO and their SAC committee and they're having absolutely wonderful meetings. But Home Assasa was full because the kids were going to sing the songs and they sang "We Love Our Veterans" one more time. And you should see the parents, how proud they were of their little kids. So we've been doing that. Shonda, amazing night. Looking forward to the fest when we get back from Tampa in a week or two weeks. And I, you're amazing. I know, we saw you at a breakout session years ago with Sam and we tried to tell the people how successful you are and evidently, they still haven't listened or they're not willing to work as hard as you guys work. But thank you for all that you do for our kids. I really do appreciate it. In safety, I invite you all to make an appointment with Mrs. McHugh up at Forest Ridge. The redesign of that front building in Forest Ridge is absolutely phenomenal. It was wide open for a while. They moved their chairs, tried to get the kids in. But the reworking for the SRO's office, the entry fee, the bulletproof glass, the exit side, if we can do that to all of our kids that were, have these open fronts, it can be done and boy, we can keep our kids safe. And so it's really good. Looking forward to going to Tampa and I'd just like to go to Tampa to see all the other school boards talking about their school boards and then I get to drive back up the Parkway saying, thank God I work in Citrus County. Because it's phenomenal what we've got going between our community, our teachers, our staff, our administrators and our community. It was, it was just wonderful and it's been that way. I'm in my ninth year up here and I've, I've just am more amazed every year at our community and how giving the hour and loving to our kids. Upward Bound for Secondary in the morning. Go ahead.
Before you adjourn the meeting, because I know you're going to have to do that soon and we open up another meeting, I would like to thank you for your commitment, dedication and leadership, serving as chairman for the Citrus County School Board for the 2024-25 school year, and we have a plaque for you.
Oh, thank you so very much. Does it say herding tomcats on it?
I know, it should, it should.
Thank you, guys. I've enjoyed being your chairman. I really have.
Can you have a picture of you guys down there?
Yeah, come on.
Okay. You just wanted to see if I could get up again.
Well, if we're gonna pick.
When I get up, I'm standing.
It really has some kind of fun being the only female. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll put this in your secret.
Now, I think my standard line is there being no further business to come before the board. The general membership, or the general board meeting is adjourned. And does anybody need a recess or can we open up the organizational meeting?
Keep going.
Okay, keep going. All right, with that adjournment, then I'm turning the gavel over to our superintendent who is, serves as the chairman of the organizational board.
So this is the one time I get to have the gavel.
Don't break it.
It's been between us and I haven't taped it down. He could have had it anytime he wanted.
So welcome to the organizational meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Florida statute 1001.371 specifies that the superintendent shall act as chairman until the organization is complete. Nominations are in order for the office of Chairman of the Citrus County School Board. Are there any nominations?
Move approval of Joe Farady as chair. Move to closed nominations.
So a vote of affirmation of Joe Farady is in order? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Joe Farady is now the chair of the board. I have to pass the gavel.
I get the gavel. I traded my gun in for a gavel, huh?
Both can be powerful.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
I was like, please. My only thing to do.
Thank you for that. Now nominations are in order for the office of Vice Chairman of the Citrus County School
Move approval of Doug Dodd as Vice Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have to think about it? No, no.
Seeing that there's only one nomination, you are confirmed. No opposed.
Okay. Now you have to do this part.
I have to do this part.
Set the date and time. Do those.
Okay. Oh, yes. All right, the organizational session is Citrus County School. We have to set a date and time. I make a motion that we stay with Tuesdays at 4:00 PM? Okay, I don't make the motion.
No, but I'll go ahead and make that motion for you.
Okay, thank you.
That we, we retain the, be the second Tuesday of the month beginning at 4:00 PM.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now it goes to you with hiring the school board, the attorney?
No, you need to make the.
Oh, I make a, I'm now on the agenda is to hire the school board attorney of.
Move approval of Nick Caparichi. Did I say that right, sir?
Yes.
Okay. As the school board attorney.
Second.
All right, I see we have a motion for Nick Caparichi as our new school board attorney. Any discussion?
Only that, sir, you have, I don't think we could have a much better opportunity to test drive a, an attorney in this way. And again, that's a credit to Mr. Bradshaw, who really saw the foresight of, you know, how do you transition this? For those of you who may not know, assuming that the vote takes place as it does, this will basically be the only third time that Citrus County School Board's history has a different attorney. So get some big shoes to fill, sir.
He's got big feet.
Well, I was a deputy when Spike was here and worked with Wes, so you do have really big shoes to fill, so.
I'm looking forward to it.
So if we could get a vote on Nicholas Caparichi as our attorney?
All in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, five zero, it's all yours. All right, does anybody make a motion to adjourn? Is that it? Oh, I'm adjourned this meeting then.
See, it's power.
Okay. That's right. Okay.